Twelfth, uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, Laramie Planning Commission Meeting, uh, roll call, please, clerk.
Evans is absent. Madamore?
Here.
Isler White? O'Toole?
Here.
Prisilik?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
And Moody?
Here.
That's six present, one absent.
Okay, um, first order of business or approval of agenda and amendments. Are there any changes to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Tom, second?
Second.
Second from Donald. All those approve, uh, the, the agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay? Okay, agenda is as good as presented. Um, uh, next is the approval of, um, the July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, uh, Commission Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
There is a motion, I believe, to approve.
Yes.
The minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Jake. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, all those opposed, say nay? Okay, minutes, uh, are approved. Next item is citizen comments. Uh, these are non-agenda related topics and no action, uh, can be taken. Is there anybody out there in the audience that wants to speak? And none on the, on the board, so, um, we will move on to the next item, which is Planning Commission and Staff Reports and Comments. Derek, and do you have any? Philip?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Just want to make a quick announcement about in September, we're going to do some, um, community outreach and some unsolicited community outreach at that, which is always nice. Uh, it's part of our ongoing effort to try to be more proactive about what we do as planners, but then what we, uh, do in the greater community and Economic Development Department as a whole. So that also includes our code inspection, our environmental he- health, uh, section, as well as the code administration folks. So the plan is, um, to go to the farmer's market, uh, breaking out those, uh, four divisions, um, and going to the farmers markets that are always really well attended if you go to those, uh, great sector of the, uh, city Laramie population. As I, I feel like goes, goes through there. And, um, we want to just have a booth there and inform the public on what we do. We'll be there, uh, one Friday, then we'll have the other sections there on other subsequent Fridays in September. Uh, but then we, we also have a plan to open it up to Planning Commissioners, um, on the last, um, Friday of September, which I believe is the twenty-seventh. Um, we'd love to have any or all of you attend. We, of course, as staff, be there, um, to engage the public as well. But we just feel like it's a great opportunity for, um, you know, folks kind of in a non-project oriented, um, session without an agenda, just answering questions, what we do, point them to relevant resources, and just kind of, uh, be more proactive about our, our messaging and, and what we have going on. Um, so I just want to put that on your radar. Um, September twenty-seventh would be for Planning Commissioners. You can let me know if you have any questions. Um, Tom, did you have a question?
No, Mr. Chair, I'm, will we have any problems with having a quorum if we all show up at once?
It's, uh, it's, as we see it, it's not a meeting because we're not discussing official business. I mean, that's my take. Um.
Also, I would say, we don't need you there for the whole time. Pick an hour or two and we'll just coordinate it. So there's only a few of you there. We don't need all seven of you at the table. So, you know, just, I guess we'll cross that bridge if we really have a quorum, but I would just say, find a time that works for you. Let us know if you can. That way we can, you know, schedule you out, make sure it works out good.
What are the hours for the farmer's market? Is it like?
Three to seven.
Three to seven?
So one of us will be there the entire?
Yeah, if we, if we agree, then, you know, one of us could take an hour and, and just sort of tag team it. That makes, makes sense.
But if there's no other questions on that, I do have another announcement as well.
Okay, go.
That kind of dovetails nicely. Um, we have Robin Despain is the new, uh, uh, department coordinator for the Community Economic Development Department. She's going to be assisting, um, with this effort. You may have already received an email from her regarding that, um, event at the end of September. But I would like to bring Robin up, uh, to introduce herself to you all because you'll probably be seeing her in the near future.
Great, great. Well, thanks, Robin.
Yes, you're welcome. And as Philip said, you probably got the email from me earlier today about the farmer's market. Um, and if you have any questions, you could certainly just respond directly to me. I'm happy to help out with any questions that you have or help coordinate what times you'll be at the booth. And, uh, I'm happy to be in the department. So as you are in the planning department, I'm sure you'll see me in there.
Could, could you just explain exactly what your position is? I, I sort of, it sort of blew, blew over my head there without as much hair as I needed, sort of.
Yeah, so it's a new department coordinator for the Economic and Community Development Department. Uh, so I'll be assisting Derek and helping the, uh, departments within that department communicate with each other and doing a lot as far as the community outreach goes, uh, with getting the community active in the planning and things that are going on in the city within that department. Um, and it's not my first time with the city. I've actually was a city employee for ten years previously. Um, and I have returned back to employment with the city of Laramie. Cause I look forward to working with you guys and gals. Thank you.
Uh, anything from commissioners that want to talk about anything in particular? Okay, seeing none. Um, next, there are disclosures, expert communications, and potential conflicts of interest. Any commissioners that are in trouble? Okay, seeing none. We move on. Current planning projects. Um, we've got some old business. Uh, it's, uh, TA dash twenty-four dash oh-one amendments to fifteen dot sixteen dot zero four zero dot K and thirteen dot twenty-eight dot zero two zero and thirteen dot oh-eight dot oh-three zero. Before you start, um, Philip, um, John Evans showed up for the record, so he is no longer absent. Duly noted. Um, okay, Philip?
Yes, Honorable Chair, members of the Commission. Um, the item for, before us this evening, uh, we're considering amendments to chapters fifteen, uh, chapters thirteen and fifteen of Laramie Municipal Code as proposed by the applicant, Coffee Engineering Surveying. Mr. Coffee, uh, is here with us this evening as well. Um, so these changes aim to foster a more development-friendly environment in our community. We agree with the applicant on, on that. And I'll go through the specific, um, amendments here briefly, and then I'll certainly invite the applicant up here to share as well. Um, the amendments to section fifteen sixteen forty K allow for reasonable construction buffers in alleys, providing flexibility and construction constraints, and reducing the need, um, for any type of future variance. Um, if you recall, we did have a variance over on Pine Street regarding alleyway width not too long ago, which was eventually resolved without the need for, um, a ruling on the variance because we, the Public Works Department worked with the applicant, um, to, to address concerns and, and in the end, a variance wasn't, wasn't needed. We were, with this change to code, we're trying to spell that out, um, better and, and increase flexibility in that section of code. Secondly, the amendments to section thirteen twenty-eight twenty revise the sewer connection requirements, allowing non-residential zoned lots to be planted without immediate sewer service installation. Um, this will in turn reduce, uh, costs, uh, to the, to the developer upfront and also create more flexibility, um, in the, in the longer term. And then lastly, the amendments to section thirteen oh-eight dot thirty, update water service installation prerequisites. Um, so it's really just the change to this water and sewer. Those are two different sections. Um, I, I want to make note that what you see in your staff report is a little different than what's presented. Um, the staff report, of course, was sent out a week ahead of time, right? And that's the information we had at the time. Uh, we were, we were still working with the, the, with the applicant on these text amendments, and in the meantime, um, we've, we've revised the code even further, which is the handout that you have in front of you. And I also have copies here, um, for the public if they want to see. Um, we don't see them as substantive changes. I mean, it's still the same section of code. Um, it's, you know, there's a different requirement in there that I will invite the city engineer to speak to if, if need be. Um, but putting that out there, I mean, if, if, uh, we as staff were comfortable handing this out this evening, but feel free to have it as an option to postpone this item to the next Planning Commission Meeting. If you, if you want this to, to, um, kind of be out there a little longer. I think I also mentioned that following the recommendation from this body, it does go to three readings of City Council where these revised text amendments that the applicant and the city staff, we've worked together on what you see there. So, you know, it's, it's in accordance with, you know, best practices, um, and, and what we as staff would like to see go through and what the developer or the applicant would like to see go through as well. Um, so just put a caveat out there for that. Um, all that being said, we reviewed the proposed, uh, changes, made adjustments to better align with, uh, city development objectives and current code requirements. And the changes, as mentioned earlier, um, are designed to reduce regulatory hurdles, which in turn will make development, um, more streamlined, um, and, and flexible. Um, public comments were solicited. We did advertise for this in the newspaper, make the public aware. We received no comments on these. Um, and in the end, we do recommend that Planning Commission move to approve the updated changes.
Is that the only language that you need in, in the move to approve is the updated changes or?
Yes, that would do for, for the process, yes.
Language of updated?
Yes, and, um, yeah, we just feel that this will benefit those developers in the community at large. And as mentioned, we have the applicant here. We also have the city engineer here who, who we worked with closely for these changes, but open it up for questions.
Any questions for, for Philip? We'll, we'll, we'll get to the engineer, I think, down.
All right, Philip, um, just matter of curiosity, under what circumstances would an existing alley be required to be paved? It's not, would there be a situation where an existing alley would be required?
Yeah, I mean, any commercial development, anything needing a site plan. So that, that accounts for any commercial as well as any multifamily that has anything above three units in it. So any, any, um, any multifamily that's got four and above or any commercial development, the, the alleyway would, would be required.
Well, that's on a, on a new project, but I'm thinking of as existing. So if somebody was to come in and convert an existing SFR to a multifamily, then they would be required to pave the alley?
That's correct, yes.
All right, thanks.
Uh, Jake?
Yeah, Philip, just clarify, we're looking at this document here. There's some bold, underlined, black stuff. There's some blue stuff. There's some blue stuff that's crossed out, more black italicized, underlined. Can you clarify which came from where?
So the blue underlined is additional. No, I'm sorry. The, the blue underlined, what you see is what's already been presented. Then we crossed, we, we eliminate a section.
The black, the black.
The black has been added, yeah.
No.
Or?
The black is what we've seen was, was on the, the, the original handout, the, the black underlined. Part of the original package.
Yes, that's, that, sorry, yeah, the blue underlined is new.
Gotcha.
Right.
The crossed out is what was presented in the package that you sent, but now you're striking.
Yes.
And then the striked out blue was something you considered but thought better of otherwise and is new, new, new text that has been struck out.
Or is this old text struck out?
Yeah.
I think, I think it's new text that, that.
Yeah, if you look at.
Final review said, let's get rid of this.
Okay, I see that.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Donald?
So Chris, who owns the alleys?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The, the alleys are all city right of way.
Okay, so what happens in a situation where a developer comes in, uh, and has, and plans so that there are some rear-facing units that need exit out through the alleyway? Uh, and wants the alleyway paved, if the developer says they need to be paved and the city agrees, do neighbors have any say in the matter?
Through you, Chair. I mean, it's kind, it, it, we, we would need more context to the question because we do have code requirement as to what we're, what would require an alleyway to be paved. So in the, in the, in the case where the code would trigger the improvement, then yeah, no, there's no, there, there would be no public input phase because it's a city requirement. So there's, there's no body or decision that needs to be made. It's just code.
And, and just to be clear, I'm asking the question, if it's an existing alley and somebody decides to develop a property and it's got a multifamily unit, uh, the neighbors do not have a say, the whole alley will be paved and paved at the developer's expense?
Correct.
Okay.
Like if there was an undeveloped lot?
Right.
And someone did a, a bigger development, then the whole alley would get paid. That's good, okay. All right, any other questions from commissioners for Philip?
Use of this, uh,
John?
Let's say, plating a lot, a lot without having sewer service, is that something that you would see as being a, uh, let's say, an inducement for people to buy lots or what's?
Well, it's through you, Chair, so it's, and I, and I'll definitely let the city engineer speak to that if he, if he feels the need. But the, these are for non-residential lots. So oftentimes with commercial development, I mean, the placement of a building, you know, could really largely determine where the connection is made. So allowing that flexibility of not requiring this sewer connection upfront would allow through the site planning process to put the sewer line in where it's needed rather than running the risk of, um, having to create a, you know, tap that one and build another one and tear up the pavement again. That's really where we're going with this.
Okay.
So, is, is this the, the, the tap into the main sewer or water line? And it's just, it's just the, the hole in, in the main line pipe that is, is the, is the service? Or is it the tap and the line to, to the, the actual non-residential development? I'm, I'm just trying, trying to get, get the mental image of, of what a buffer means and, and, and what the water and sewer service means physically.
Mr. Chair, I do, I, I think I can answer your question, but I've been warned about putting my engineering hat on too much. So if we could, um, invite the city engineer up to answer that specific question, I think it'd probably make more sense.
Great, thank you.
Honorable Chair, uh, to answer your question, so in regard to the, the services, the, the development will still be required to install a main if it's needed. So that'll be the water and sewer mains that are running. And what this does is it allows the developer, he has a choice to either install or not install the service line. So the service line would be the, um, the tap that you're noting coming in from the property that would ultimately connect to the main. Uh, they would go in the street to, to tie into that and they would come back and do that after they figured out like where they want to build that site plan and where the best use for those service lines coming in.
Which they would leave it with just the main sewer and, and water lines, um, where the street is, is, is not paved until they decide where, where the, where the, uh, the sewer connections actually are?
Honorable Chair, the, the street would be paved, the water and sewer mains would be installed. Uh, they would come back and, and they would end up tearing up the street and then patching that back to, uh, whatever's needed to meet the requirements for that.
And so the, so the savings is that instead of putting in a tap, a line in the beginning, and then finding out that you want it, you know, fifty feet up or downstream of that location that you don't have to go back in and rip out or, or plug or, um, the, the original one put in. So you wouldn't have to do two, two terrans, you'd just do one.
Yep, that could definitely play out.
That's, uh, is, is that kind of the purpose of efficiency and cost saving?
Yeah, and I can let, I would recommend letting Mr. Coffee speak on that if he has anything else to add, but I think that was one of the intents of it, so yes.
In, in, in the alleyway, uh, the reasoning section, um, says allow for a reasonable construction buffer without the need to obtain a variance. What, what is, what does buffer mean specifically? With respect to the alleys?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. Appreciate it.
Honorable Chair, so the, if, if you recall, the variance process on Pine Street with the alleyway, the concern there was the, the buffer being where the construction forms would be, where the concrete, where the concrete forms are essentially laid before the concrete is poured and, and, and all that. So I mean, in order not to work in private property and have to get construction easement and all that, this buffer would allow, you know, it might not be sixteen feet, right? Not all, I mean, sixteen feet is from property line to property line. And this, this recommendation would allow the developer, you know, that six inches to tw- to, to a foot on both sides to lay those forms and work exclusively within the right of way and not have to, um, go down that, that path. And it, it will result in a bit of a narrower alleyway, but in the end, I mean, it's, it's, it's easier that way.
One, one, one other question. So was, were these text amendments proposed from a specific project? Or is it after, you know, three or four projects and just running into the same problem and the same headaches and saying, we, we, you know, we need Mr. Coffee to give us a, a proposal and to make text, text amendments? I'm just, whether it's project, project-driven, single project-driven, or just sort of multiple project?
Honorable Chair, I will give the applicant a chance to answer that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Coffee?
Honorable Chair, Commission, so the impetus of asking to make these text amendments, um, for the alley, it is becoming apparent that there is a, a, a challenge on a particular project and there's going to be a challenge on future projects. So I took it upon myself to, to write the, uh, text amendment change in anticipation that we want to make the code better and more developer-friendly. As it sits right now, if we leave the code as is, the developer would have to complete, pave the entire width of the alley, which is physically impossible without going and asking residents to give us a construction easement, which was going to be relatively impossible as well. So, uh, my original proposal to the city, uh, was met with, um, maybe a little bit of lack of understanding of what I was trying to do, and that's maybe partially my communication. But really, all we're asking for is some flexibility in construction so that the pavement, which is required by the city for a specific project, to actually be constructed in a, in a, in a manner that won't violate, uh,
Property.
Property rights.
How, how about the, um, the, the, the water and the sewer service?
Sure. So we continue, Coffee Engineering and, and at the staff, and we continually run into this issue where, um, we have plotted a, uh, non, and, and, uh, worked with the developer to plat a non-residential lot. And according to the current code, uh, water and sewer services are required to be installed at the time of construction of the infrastructure, the water, the sewer lines, the, the roads, uh, and have that approved by the city prior to lot sales. Okay? So what we're experiencing now is particular, and a good example would be, uh, projects at the Timberline Business Park, where we've, the, the developer has installed the water and sewer line on the property in anticipation that would be hooked up to in the future. Well, when the commercial building comes in, um, the building that they need to have built on that property is in a position and, and, and the sizes of those utilities are not in concert with what's already installed. So what that developer has to do then, or that, that, that builder has to do, is put his new lines in, which dig up a chunk of the asphalt or, and, and then creates a big trench in the, and damage to the asphalt. And then they have to go back in and abandon the ones that are already in place. So instead of making two, one or two cuts into the, into the road, they have the expense of making four cuts into the road. And so we, we think it's a waste of the developer's energy to install those initial service connections when we don't know the size of the water connection needs to be, potentially sewer, sewer connection. And we don't know where that particular building is going to need it to be located along their frontage. So I took it upon myself to write those text amendments and submit it and pay the fee so that we could get, uh, that piece of the code changed for the, to the benefit of the community, frankly.
Okay, uh, commissioners, any other questions for, for Mr. Coffee? The applicant? Seeing none? Anything else you want to say?
No. Pleasure, always pleasure to work with planning staff.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, um, public, uh, comment, is there any comment on this, on these text amendments from the audience or the board? Not seeing none? Um, is there a motion? And if, if the motion is to approve, include the updated, uh?
I move to recommend that the City Council approve amendments to fifteen dot sixteen dot zero four zero dot K and thirteen dot twenty-eight dot zero two zero and thirteen dot zero eight dot zero three zero of Laramie Municipal Code based on, uh, as amended by Planning Division letter dated, what's the date on this, Phil? I'll call it.
Today.
Eight twelve, twenty twenty-four. And as recommended by staff and as shown in Attachment A. And should we call this letter?
Proposed Amendment One.
Proposed Amendment One, okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Donald. Um, any last discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Um, roll call, vote, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Madamore?
Aye.
Isler White? O'Toole?
Aye.
Prisilik?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
And Moody?
Aye.
That is seven yeses and zero noes.
Hey, motion, motion approved. Uh, new business is Z dash twenty-four dash oh-one, uh, ROB overlay zoning amendment for former Public Works faculty Derek. Educate us.
Chair, Commission, I will provide you my staff report. Um, Chair, Commission, this is a request, uh, by the city of Laramie, who is the property owner for the property that I'll just kind of refer to as the former Public Works facility located on Fourth Street. Um, if you're familiar with that area, it's kind of south of Shield Street and north of. Um, if you're familiar with that area, it's kind of south of Shield Street and north of Canby Street. Uh, the request here today is to establish the R O B, um, overlay zone on that property, uh, which currently is zone B two, um, which is a business zoning district currently. So, um, the property that we're, or the area that we're talking about, six point, six, about six acres, six point zero one acres. Um, and, and really the purpose of this is to further accommodate future development of this property. Um, as the owners of the property, uh, we believe that, uh, the establishment of the Rob overlay zone will permit multifamily development as a by right use within the, within that property, um, while keeping the B two zone to hopefully accommodate the future intent as outlaid in the plans, the, the different plans for the Fourth Street property, which is a mixed use residential development. Primarily, um, if you take a look, uh, we kind of took a look at this property and really kind of considered some of the different ideas. Um, if you look at some of the planning documents that we have completed for this property, uh, we talked about everything from potentially DC zoning, so the downtown commercial zoning district, so complete urban zoning district to potentially R three zoning. Um, however, after really reviewing this and really considering some of the different options, uh, we felt that the, the Rob overlay zone, uh, really was poison is exactly really what that zoning district is intended for is to provide that transition between some of the commercial zoning into residential zoning. And so if you take a look at the zoning map that was provided, you'll see that as, you know, kind of adjacent to this, you have R three zoning property. Now granted, it is the park directly to the, to the east of this, but on the north and the south ends, you have this more dense, more intense residential zoning district. As, but to the east, you have a commercial zoning district, that B two zoning district. And really, when you, when you take a look, and I will not read it verbatim, I provided you kind of the explanation of what the Rob overlay zone is, and it's, it's for that intent is to provide for that transition. And so with that, um, and after looking at such as the comprehensive plan, uh, the major street plan, the different housing studies that I cited within the staff report, uh, we believe setting up this property for that residential development as a by right use is, is beneficial for this property in this location because of the different factors that we have here. Um, the one thing that I would, I would like to point out is that, you know, in looking at this and the fact that it was this kind of like, you know, institutional site, uh, we do know through that North Fourth Street redevelopment plan that we did want to see this kind of commercial residential development. And this really allows for both of those to occur together under a one, under one zoning and in one area without a whole lot of, uh, uh, like extra processes, because it is really what we want to see in this location. So, um, with properties and with rezoning requests like this, um, these follow just a typical zoning practice like we would if we were changing the zoning completely. Uh, we do post notice on the property and we do published notice as well as mailed notice to all property owners within three hundred feet. Um, we have received no public comments regarding this property. Um, at the time of the writing of this, uh, I did get one phone call, uh, just asking about the signs that were posted and just wanted to know what we were doing. And they, there was no concern brought up about once I showed them where the staff report was and things like that, so. Um, you'll see in this, in the report too, um, just a support letter from Northwest Real Estate Capital Group. This is the group that I mentioned in some previous meetings that we are currently working with for, we hope, future redevelopment of this property. Um, and they just are indicating that, um, this Rob overlay is helpful in any future tax credits that they potentially may go after at the state level, because it makes the process more assured to the state if they were to rank those requests. So, um, with that, um, I would be happy to answer any questions, um, and that's all I have.
Uh, questions, uh, Tom?
This will be, uh, T I F finance project or possibly we don't, we haven't gotten that far into the weeds yet?
Correct. At this point, I can't say that it's for sure going to be that, um, we're just not there yet. But, um, it could be, we, it's definitely something that's been brought up and has, is on the table at least, so.
Has anybody expressed any ideas about how many units of residential they're talking about there?
So.
Back in the seventies, we would have put four hundred units up there, you know, we're not a problem, there'd have been stick built and then ugly, but.
In, in the original proposal, it was a few hundred units. Right now, we're looking at phasing this, so in the first phase, it won't be that many. Um, likely probably going to start more on the north end, but I think that that's, we're still in negotiations on trying to figure out the exact number of units. But, um, if you look at the R F P that we did, um, you'll note that we had some minimum unit numbers and some different affordability ranges, and we'll still need all those. Uh, but I think it's going to be much more than what we had. I think we only had like something like eighty in the first, in the, in the R F P, but we're going to have many more than that in the site in total, so.
Anyone else, Commissioners, for Derek? Donald?
S- some of the sentences in this don't make a lot of sense, grammar police. Uh, on the, on the second page, I, I think what is meant to be said, this is on the second paragraph on the second page, while this application was initiated by the city of Laramie, the owner of the property will stop. I think what was meant there was the owner of the, the owner of the proper, property comma, the intent of the application, no comma, is to blah, blah, blah. Is that correct?
I, I think that that would probably be correct, yeah. I see what you're saying, yes.
If you move down to page four, uh, second paragraph. Uh, this is right. No, I'm wrong. Uh, if you go to the, the final paragraph on that sentence, on that, on that page, the lack of leasable space in the community limits the ability for users seeking this space if it doesn't existing.
Exists?
If it doesn't exist.
Which one was that?
So, uh, page four at the bottom, the last.
Page four, okay.
First word on page five.
Yeah, looks, you know, for, you know, the, the lack of leasable space in the community limits the ability for users seeking this type of space.
Right.
Is, you know, if it simply doesn't exist, which is something that we've continually heard is lack of that type of commercial space, so.
My mother's ghost is satisfied.
Okay. Any, any other questions from Commission on this? Okay, and since we'll let, uh, John figure out how to turn his phone off.
Yeah, sorry.
So, applicant is city of Laramie, so we're, we're covered there. Um, so, um, I guess we're done with you, Derek, thank you. Um, any, uh, questions from the public on this issue? Come on up to the podium and state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, my name is Brett Glass and I am a Laramie resident, of course, and own a couple of businesses here in Laramie. Um, I've been, uh, tracking this project with interest. And one of the things I'm concerned about is that the Rob, just because of the way it's structured, might not be the best mechanism to accomplish what, uh, what the city wants to accomplish. And, uh, here's why, and this, this is something which I took up with Randy Hunt back when he was Community Development Director. And they, and the Rob was established long ago. If you take a look at, uh, the U D C, um, section fifteen dot oh eight dot oh four oh E four, and then, and, and I'm sorry, this is the, the outline, the outline goes very deep. And then B and D, what you see is that, uh, if you establish the Rob in a business district other than downtown commercial district, um, the dimensional standards that are applied to it are the ones for the, are the stricter ones for the residential district rather than the, uh, more liberal ones for the, uh, for the business district. And so when you apply the Rob on top of a business district, you're actually in some ways restricting what you can do there rather, rather than allowing more things to be done there. And this is a concern. If there's a way to avoid that, it might allow, it, it might allow more of what the council has envisioned to be done. Um, they seem to be looking for something which is very, you know, which has a lot of mixed use, very dense. Um, the Rob would actually, it, at least unless you recommend it to council at the same time that they change those sections and, and make it so that, uh, that the, that the less stringent requirements applied, what you may be doing actually is, is preventing them from achieving what they want to achieve. Um, I've, I've, you know, I, I also have been involved with, uh, looking, looking at how the Rob affects another property that I own. And there's also a concern there. Um, but, uh, you may want to consider this. Um, I'm a fan of just simple pyramidal zoning without all of the many details and twists and turns that the U D C has, um, for, for, for reasons like this. But in any case, I think you should examine this before you go ahead with applying the Rob to this only because you may actually harm the city's ambitions in terms of what it does with the property.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, so, so, yeah, yeah. Uh, Derek, can, can you, um, uh, talk to that? Uh, I would hate to approve something that was dimension, dimensional standards, we're going to tie your hands, um, in the development of, of a commercial development, I guess, is, was the idea.
I think, eh, eh, Chair, Commission, I think how I'd respond is that the, in, in terms of the Rob overlay and the types of use there, essentially you use the R three zoning standards or the B two zoning standards. That's the simple way to put it. In the, in the effect that we need to use those R three standards, we're talking about a five foot setback versus a zero foot setback, which is extremely minimal. They are different, I would agree. Um, they are a little bit more constrained, but the significant difference between when Randy Hunt was here was that we changed all of our setbacks in our three zoning district to reduce them down to that five feet. And so really, it's providing more the flexibility of uses and the establishment of uses without going through full conditional use processes or anything like that. Um, and so that is much more important than the five foot setback, which a lot of times you'll see buildings there already five feet back.
So you don't think the five foot setback is, you know, restricting development unnecessarily?
No, we don't. And, and, and the other, the other aspect to that is if someone so choose, chose to do, they could go through the full process if the five feet was important enough. Let's say for whatever reason, the development process goes through and they need that five feet, you could go through a process and come before this board and do a conditional use and establish commercials or multifamily residential in the B two zoning district through the conditional use process and then use the zero foot setback. So it, it's providing options, it could be a little bit limited in certain cases, but the five feet, we don't believe is substantial and it's why we made that recommendation, so.
Okay, h- how many, I'll just finish my thought, how, how many other, um, R O B districts are there in town?
Not.
Are there a pile?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a series of them, um, actually on our, on our zoning map, you can actually kind of take a look at them, I mean, let me just, I can, give me like two seconds, let me generically tell you.
So they're kind of used very commonly as a Band-Aid for their zoning?
No, they, they, the Rob overlay history was establishment of a zoning district that understood that there was kind of this mix between commercial zoning and multifamily zoning in that transitional area. I mean, so fourteen by quick count, looking at my map really fast, right? Take that for what it's worth, plus or minus one, maybe or two. Um, but like areas of like North Fourth and South Fourth and Third Street are that way, where you've kind of got residential and commercial mixes in there. Um, there's some areas out in the Turner track that are Rob overlay zone. We've got a few places over in West Laramie and on the west side, um, and some areas kind of south along Spring Creek that kind of recognize or could be some of this kind of like residential and commercial mix in these like more, you know, where you see like multifamily development, so.
Is, is, is this something that's usually proposed by the developer? Or is it something that the planning department recognizes would be a good thing to, to do in a particular, you know, property?
Um, most of the first ones were all established just when we, once we established the Rob overlay zone and code and like made it something, because that always didn't exist in code, uh, we went through and made a recommendation to establish that in certain locations. And then at the time, I think we had a couple, if I remember from recalling correctly, like one over in West, in West Laramie, one of those was asked to be brought in. And then usually like any in the future would just be like most zoning districts, usually the property owner makes that request. So we just happen to be the property owner.
Gotcha. Any other questions from Commissioners?
I answered.
Tom, did you say something?
No, he, he answered mine.
All right, well, well, thank you, thank you, Brent, thank you, guest speaker, I appreciate that, the input. So, um, I guess we got final discussion taken care of, uh, is there, is there a, a motion?
I move to recommend that the City Council approve an amendment to the city of Laramie's official zoning map establishing the R O B residential overlay for business districts, overlay zone for approximately six point oh one acres of property located along Fourth Street between Canby and Shield Street, according to findings of fact and conclusion of law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Madam Moore, uh, final discussion amongst Commissioners? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Evans?
Aye.
Madam Moore?
Aye.
Is there a white? O'Toole?
Aye.
Prisilik?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
And Moody?
Aye.
That is seven yeses and zero noes.
Okay, motion passes. Um, so that's it for, um, for items, is there, uh, uh, all those in favor of adjourn, adjourning the
So moved.
The meeting? Um, second?
Yes, sir.
From John, all those in favor of adjournments, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, hey, okay, we're done, thank you, everybody.